I'd like to call this meeting of your North City Council order. Honored, please call in.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
And Mr. Raff.
Here.
We have all here this evening. Please stand for the invocation by Mr. Labutus. All by the pleasure.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, as we come and pray this evening, we thank you for this time and this opportunity that we can gather, discuss the business of the city. But in a week that can hold many pleasant distractions, I would ask that we quiet our hearts and our minds for a moment to take inventory of the blessings that each of us have, whether it be people, or things, or experiences, or those in our lives that we count near and dear to ourselves, that we would take an inventory of those and have an attitude of gratitude and unification for this week. I ask that you be in the meeting this evening, give us your vision for the city, and bless our conversation. These things I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for a council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? We'll move on to the minutes of our November 5, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Bub.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time.
That passes, thank you. We have one appointment this evening by Mayor Hall, reappointing Tony Fox to the City of Newark Board of Zoning Appeals. His new four-year term begins January 1, 2019, and will expire December 31, 2022. So a motion to approve that?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the post. That passes, thank you. We have five reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from economic development, one from capital improvement, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. And also under communications this evening, we have three from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, one for Red Eye Express on Mount Vernon Road, another the transfer of Pizza Hut on North 21st Street to ADT Ohio LLC, and finally a note from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a notice of legislative authority that all permits to sell alcohol beverages in the political subdivision will expire February 1, 2019. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this first section? Please raise your hand. Ma'am? You've just come up, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy Goshtrew at 185 Van Vorhees Street, and we are having some major issues with the homeless that are living in a residential area on an open lot right next to our home. We have taken things up with property management, the police have been there for removal, they actually were staying on city property up a little bit closer to Mid-Ohio Warehouse fences, and they removed them at that point in time. They left for a good three days and then came back. Now they're staying on the lot next to us, which is owned by Orion Hewitt, who also himself at times stay with them there, so he, I would assume, is homeless also. There are many people that stay in and out of there. There's a, it's a lot of traffic, they have a pit bull dog, we have five children, it's just frustrating. They've been told to leave, they were told to leave last Thursday, they had 24 hours to leave, on Wednesday they had to be gone by Thursday, and they're still staying there. So I guess my thing is, is what is the enforcement for this? What do we do? They're not allowed to stay there by property management, but property management says that they can't remove them. They can just tell them to leave.
Tell me the name of that street again.
Van Vorhees, V-A-N-V-O-O-R-H-I-S, and it's actually, their address is literally right next to ours, but it's Iron Avenue, it's like 383 Iron. So we just need some kind of direction, I guess, as to what we can do and how we can solve them not being there.
All right, thank you. Sir?
My name is Robert J. Schaffen. I live on 398 Worley Avenue, and they live about 100 yards, you could say, behind me, and I could readjust my neighbor, not with traffic going in and out day and night and all that. I'm a little bit, being a first-time home buyer too, I'm a little bit afraid where, you know, they might come over, break in my house, and all that. I've been in different cities, I think this is the worst thing I've ever seen, where homelessness is very close to residents, and all that. I'm just, don't like see, you know, this, and, you know, a residence where a bunch of kids is around too. I know, that's all I got to say.
Good, thank you. Anyone else for this first section? Ma'am? Anyone else for this first section?
I'm at 402 Worley Avenue, my name's Shakara Miller, same thing, I have two small children. With them being back there, we park our cars back there, it's very dark, you can't see what's going on back there, just traffic all the time. I get they have, they need a place to live too, but it's too close to our homes for our comfort, and I shouldn't have to leave my home because that's where they're staying, so.
Okay, thank you. You said this is a vacant lot, right?
Yes.
Anyone else to speak this first section?
Yeah. I'm just in the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tim Osborne. Live 406 Worley Avenue. I've been living there for almost 30 years. This is the worst neighborhood I've ever lived in. I've never seen that. I would never like to see a homeless living out in the street. I would like to help, but they're in the wrong place, wrong area. I'm just afraid, because I'm deaf, I can't hear what's going on. My dogs bark all the time, middle of the night, get up at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and then I get up to go to work, and I go at 4:00 in the morning. I see them out in the street, riding their bike with their backpacks, looking at cars, looking at people's yards, and the light is too dark, so they have free range. Need more lighting in that area, just kinda scary in that area now. Need more patrol vans maybe, in that area, just to keep us safe, that's all I ask.
Thank you. I know you guys wanted to leave. Director Rhodes, would you guys step out there and talk to the gentleman in the blue shirt? This is Director Rhodes, and this is also Director Baum. He might be able to give you a little guidance. You can do it now.
Thank you.
That way you won't, that way you won't leave without somebody saying something to you. Okay, now we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 18-35.
Ordinance 18-35 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark Division of Water and Wastewater by creating classifications of project engineer and environmental specialist technician within the division, and setting the compensation therefore, and establishing all other positions within the division.
18-35 will be held for a second reading for two weeks. Next we have 18-36.
Ordinance 18-36 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending the base wage and salary table of the City of Newark for the position of street and traffic engineer with a strength authorization of one in the Division of Engineering.
18-36 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next we've got 18-37.
Ordinance 18-37 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark Department of Public Safety, Division of Property Maintenance by creating the classification of property maintenance code official, rehab specialist supervisor, and setting the compensation therefore.
18-37 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next we have 18-38.
Ordinance 18-38 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the pay range and department authorization tables of the Department of Economic and Community Development for the position of code enforcer, rehab specialist, and setting compensation therefore.
And 18-38 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next we have resolutions on the second reading, 18-83.
Resolution 18-83 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a one-year use of funds action plan along with an application for fiscal year 2019 federal community development block grant funds as required by 24 CFR Part 91.220 for various programs related to housing and community development.
You've heard the second reading of 18-83, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 18-83.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-83? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-83 passes 10-0. Next on the second reading, we have 18-84.
Resolution 18-84 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-84, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-84.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-84? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake.
Pass.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-84 passes 10-0. And finally, on the second reading, we have 18-85.
Resolution 18-85 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-85, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lyne.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 18-85.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-85? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-85 passes 10-0. Now we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 18-87.
Resolution 18-87 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-87 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next we have 18-88.
Resolution 18-88 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-88.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 18-88.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expiate this, some of these have bills that are due, and then we also have some payouts that we need to pay out immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Honored, please call a roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Lyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 18-88.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-88?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Mr. President, I need to make an amendment to Section 2 under that area, the termination comp is showing $500, that was a miscalculation by the Auditers Department, so that number needs to be changed to $6,900, which brings the total of Section 2 to $36,900, so I'll make an amendment to make those two changes.
Amendment by Mr. Marmee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lyne. So the amendment we're changing is the payout and the total amount. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Can I just get those numbers back, what changed? Yeah, termination comp, which is the account 1531225145, is changing from $500 to $6,900, so that changes the total of Section 2 to $36,900.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote on the amendment.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-88 has been amended. Is there any other discussion on 18-88 as amended? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-88 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-89.
Resolution 18-89 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the City of Newark for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities for street separation project and designating a dictated repayment source for the loan.
18-89 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next we go on to 18-90.
Resolution 18-90 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 18-90 will be held for two weeks, will be busy in two weeks. And last, 18-91.
18-91, resolution 18-91 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to enter into a contract without competitive bidding for the repairing of the traveling screening system in the south intake building at the water treatment plant.
Yeah, 18-91.
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 18-91.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Raff.
This was at the request of Mr. Loomis.
I'm sorry.
This was at the request of Mr. Loomis.
Sure we have a good reason for that, he could address that. Honored, please call a roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Raff.
Make a motion to adopt 18-91.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other discussion on 18-91? Seeing none, all please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
And Mr. Raff.
Yes.
18-91 passes 10-0, and that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Okay? Next, our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Again, the same rules apply.
Stephen Smith, 237 Violet Court here in Newark. I have been asked on behalf of the South Newark Civic Association to invite the council members and the mayor to a caroling session, which will be held on 13 December at 6:30. They're going to meet at the old Newark Electroplating Parking Lot on South Second Street, and there will be refreshments available at the Meeting House on Ohio Avenue afterwards. I was also asked to check on the availability of the city's mascot for this event, so that invitation is on the table, and if anyone would like to come participate with that, you would be very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a mascot besides Mr. Frazier? Okay. Thank you. Continuing to see the decline in businesses in the city, Kansas Market and Hudson Avenue, they closed, and Crawford's Autobody Downtown also closed recently. And you know, we've got this downsizing going on at State Farm, they're going to have fewer employees, using less space. Now I notice more than ever, we've got empty storefronts all over everywhere, vacant lots, and I don't see any development, any progress happening around here. It seems to be getting worse and worse. I just don't understand it. And go into any end of the city, you'll see vacant lots or empty buildings, have businesses. And you know, it's really sad, we can't turn this around somehow, and it's more and more keep closing. And that's all I wanted to share with you. Also, you know, a lot of people didn't know that Subway had closed on Melbourne, yeah, Melbourne Road, because they've been there 40 years, and people went there for so long when they were younger, and you know, a lot of stuff's not being reported to the public when these businesses are gone and closed. People walk up to them, I see people, they still go on the phone building, and it's locked up because it's empty, you know, they still go there, you know, try to pay bill or something. And they don't even aware of that, and that's been years since they've been closed, and they're still going to the door trying to open it. So I think that, you know, there should be a publicity, you know, a little more, get advertised or something, this business is closing, no longer around, get it out to the people somehow. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Any city officials this evening? Our honorable Assistant Attorney.
I will pass, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Well, at least she didn't say anything about Clemson, so you know.
I don't know enough about Clemson to say anything.
Glad to hear that.
Or football, football either, I'm not on football.
Mayor Hall.
I will probably hear about Clemson the next time.
I'm sure.
I'll let that go. Just to remind everyone, Courthouse lighting is on this Friday, and it's a great downtown event, but our festivities will start at Canal Market District at 3:30. Real nice tree was donated, 17-foot tall tree for Canal Market, they decorated it up pretty good, and a good collaborative effort, and so it should be, weather looks good, rain chance is very minimal, it's the warmest day of the week, so I encourage everyone to be downtown with the other several thousand people, and enjoy the evening, and have a safe and happy Thanksgiving doll. Thank you, Mayor.
What time, that lighting starts at 6?
Well, it'll be 3:30, 6:30 Canal Market, the caroling will start at 6 o'clock around the courthouse, and Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus will arrive about 7:00. And just FYI, there's also an event for children at the Elks that's open to the public at 7:30, so if you've got some young children and want to go play some games afterwards, there's a lot going on downtown that night.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge, thank the mayor and his administration, the members of the CIC, the Lick County Library, and then the Works. Last Tuesday, they had a very successful event at the Doubletree Hotel, which was a presentation on Newark then and now, and I thought it was great. And I, you know, Mayor, you and your team, and everyone else involved, Corey Stutes for the Lick County Library, and Craig Montgomery from the Works, they gave just a wonderful presentation on our 200-year history as a city, and then plus where we've, activities have been going on here in recent years, and I thought that was a great presentation. So, you know, kudos to you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that, that was a great, you know, visually, I mean, the PowerPoint presentation with all the pictures and everything involved, I thought that was a very good, you know, you left feeling proud to be from Newark, and I thought that was a great sentiment, so, so thank you for pulling that together. And then just also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. As soon as I get out of here, I'm going to pack my bags and leave for Key West in the morning, so I'll see you all when I get back, so.
That's real.
So much love, I'll send you a postcard, but with that, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub.
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub, and Mr. Cost.
I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost, Mr. Fennell.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, except for Jeremy, who will...
Mr. President, Jeremy, happy Thanksgiving, I'll break the trend.
I'll break the trend. 31 West has a free concert Wednesday night for Thanksgiving. I also want to kind of highlight the maintenance of street, the wastewater repair, the scoreboard that came through committee, and the investment that we're making in the city to bring it forward. Also, the Lookup Center is doing a free Thanksgiving meal that they're going to be donating. So as people have time on Thanksgiving, it's always a great effort to go out there, volunteer, deliver meals to those that are shut-ins, that are elderly, that are impoverished, and try to do your part to really put Thanksgiving into perspective of the blessings that we have and the opportunities that we have in our lives in giving back. Black Friday, please be safe. Please care about one another and don't trample each other. And I also want to thank Ryan Bub for his work with the courthouse lighting and the fundraising effort that's associated with that. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Trader. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, I'll pass.
Ms. Hall, Mr. Labutus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things, just want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving, as I mentioned earlier. Take inventory of those blessings, if you can find a way, be a blessing to someone else as well during this weekend. And secondly, I'd like to thank Director Rhodes and the Streets Department. They were able to help me with an issue within the ward and get that rectified, and the residents were very happy to have that done. So that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Marmee.
Yeah, Mr. Rath and I just finished the Citizens Police Academy, so Deputy Chief Logan, you guys did a really, really nice job with that. Specifically, I want to call out Sergeant Wells, Sergeant Eskins, and Officer Beach, who I thought put on a really nice program this year. Would, I've said it before up here, but if you get a chance next year, I think they'll be doing Class Number 10. Really recommend anybody who doesn't, who has any interest to go ahead and do it, you will not regret spending some time learning about the agency. It was really, really nice program. So thank you for the program you guys put on. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a Finance Committee meeting. And I don't know if those folks are still out there or not.
I think they are.
Can you open the doors? I do have some comments that they, I don't know if they want to hear them or not, but it's pertaining to the subject that they spoke about.
So, I appreciate you. Hang on, man.
Just some comments about what is happening in your neighborhood. And quite frankly, it's not just your neighborhood. It's happening in my neighborhood, out by where I live. There are folks putting up tents here and there, just living basically off the land. We also had a gentleman who had a vacant property and decided that he was going to reside there for a while in a tent. It is a difficult situation. We had to deal with it through property maintenance and the police department. It was a combination of things. Basically, there has, they have to find some kind of violation when the property owner is saying that it's their land and they want to do it. And you had, it sounds like you have one gentleman, that it is his land, and he stays there, so therefore, he's condoning it. So there really has to be a violation. There's different things. They have to have different, they have to have a facility of some sort or something to maintain sanity, a sanitary system of some kind. There's other issues as far as trash and things like that, that also are other enforcement vehicles that were utilized.